In addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council for the year 2018 to 2019 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council for the year 2018 to 2019 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act.
Madam President.
Thank you very much. Before we start the meeting, I know that we have the Lowry family here, and I just want to say my condolences. We're actually going to give the opportunity to speak, but we do have something scheduled, so it's going to take a few minutes, maybe 20 minutes, and then we're going to have you speak, okay? Madam Clerk, I'd like to start off with the sewer presentation.
Yes, Madam President. Our next item would be presentation slash discussion. This is a presentation by Ms. Elaine Vastis, Senior Manager, Rafitellis Financial Consultants, Inc., regarding the sewer rate study results.
Madam President, if I may make a brief introduction.
I can't hear you.
If I may make a brief introduction.
Marge.
And some background, thank you. So Ms. Vastis is here this evening to make the presentation on behalf of Rafitellis Financial Consultants. The firm was commissioned by a former governing body a couple of years ago to perform an update on a sewer rate study for the purpose of determining the equitable distribution of our sewer charges based on flow. And so as she walks through this presentation this evening, you will begin to understand a little bit more about the background and how we arrived at this point in time and what the objectives are.
Very well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having me today. I will be going over the presentation. As mentioned, our firm was commissioned to prepare a sewer rate study, so we're going to be looking at those results.
Do we have this presentation? Where's the presentation?
I think the question is if we have any hard copies. The presentation is going to be right there.
Correct. You want to be literal, Councilman? Yes, I need a hard copy. Do we have hard copies?
Now they were just looking at us like, what do you mean? And I just wanted to actually clarify. We're looking for hard copies.
So we don't have hard copies?
Should I wait for the hard copies?
Okay, start it.
Go ahead and start. Okay, thank you. The purpose of the study was basically had three reasons we were commissioned to do the study. The first was to assist in identifying all of the sewer cost for the sewer utility. The second was to look at the allocation of cost among the customer classes. And the third was to calculate the rates under an alternative rate structure. The one thing to point out is, as we're going to look at the alternative rate structure, the city and state provided us with what I'd call guiding principles in terms of rate setting, and they were twofold. One was to improve equity, and the second was to protect the affordability of sewer bills for residential customers. And that's important to note because you can have different guiding principles, and because we use these two, that is kind of why we landed on the rate structure that we landed. Briefly, the current rate structure is up on the board. I know you're familiar with it, but I did want to point out a couple of observations. The first is the residential customers, the sewer rates are fixed. It's a per-unit charge, and it should be noted that a multifamily unit can pay up to 25% less than a single-family unit. And there is also for the, what we call, non-residential customers that are currently labeled as small, commercial, and direct customers, they are assessed a sewer fee based on their water flow, and it is a declining block rate structure, meaning the more sewer flow they have, you'll see the third tier down below where it shows 40,000, 100 cubic feet or more, you'll notice that rate is lower than the first tier, which is atypical. And then finally, you'll, and one other thing to mention is currently there are some customers, in particular under, that are currently classified as direct customers that are tax-exempt, that are charged a fixed fee. So there are some customers that are actually either not assessed similar to other customers. For example, there's a couple of non-residential customers that, or commercial customers that are classified as direct customers that could be classified, that should be classified as small commercial. So there's a few inconsistencies among the classification of customers as well. And finally, down below, we have the tributary customers. This is an implied rate. They pay by contract, so what we show here is just the revenues divided by their flow. These customers only comprise a very small percentage of the flow, and as we'll talk in a minute, their revenues is pretty small compared to the deficit that we're going to look at. So it's a very small percentage of the overall flow. Other relevant data that we looked at, or should be noted, the last rate increase for sewer rates was in 2015. Nationally, sewer rates have increased between 5 and 6% per year over the last 10 years. And also, you currently have 5% of your billings are uncollectible, which we factored into the study as well. And as mentioned previously, the tributary sewer flow represents a very small portion of the overall flow that is sent to Passaic Valley Sewer Commission.
Council President, and I'm not too sure where we're getting our emphasis, but I'm sitting here, and I want to jump out of my chair every time I hear how small these tributaries are. They have been ripping us off for almost 100 and something years. So I don't want to hear that they're small. When I go to the bank, if I have no money in the bank, I can't take any money out. When I go to the grocery store, if I don't have the money in my pocket, I can't take out more services that I'm willing to pay for. All right? So they owe us a tremendous amount of money that's on the table that we haven't been paid for. And part of this entire study, I would hope, would be able to tell us how we're going to recoup that money. Because this is still the United States. You don't get anything for free. And they have been living off of the backs of Patterson residents all this time. We have doubled the rate, we have added on the rates again, and if we're not having a solution how to, how we're going to get the money for those seniors and citizens of Patterson, this all is going to be for vain.
And we do, this study does address that. And as you'll see when you get the full report, in effect, basically what we're talking about is the tributary customers because of their, the size of their flow, the amount that you're going to recoup, and it's in the study, but it's approximately, say, $170,000 is what you could recoup from them. Currently, you're recouping $19,000.
Ma'am, and I want to apologize, okay? But there's a something called opportunity cost, okay? What would it cost them if they had to put their independent pipeline to run from their community to the sewer center? What would that have to cost them? What does it cost our residents to take care of our entire system? And why should we allow somebody to ride on the back of our program for free? So it's not about what their flow is necessarily, but what is that opportunity cost? What is the cost that it would take for them to provide that service? What is the market value for the service that we're providing them? And it's a way lot more than what they've been paying. And I don't hear anybody being concerned about that. And it bothers me. We're used to being taken advantage of, and these communities have been taking advantage of the City of Patterson, as we say, going far back as, with an invalid contract, and everybody seems to accept it as, oh, well, that's just water under the bridge. No, that's money out of our pockets, and we need to find a way how we're going to recoup that. It can't just be... I apologize, and this will be my last interruption.
Councilman Rivera.
So, Councilman McCoy, it seems like yesterday, over 10 years ago, when I was sitting there making the presentation from the administration side, you had the same concern. And at that time, we said that those municipalities were connected for maybe over 20 years at that time.
No, longer.
It's longer, but they gave a number of 20 years. And we still not addressing it. And again, when I got here, I said that we need to change the culture. Things need to get done. If I'm a homeowner, and I don't pay my sewer, I'm going to get a lien. So we cannot play nice anymore with these municipalities. I'm sure the administration is working on it to, you know, to make sure they pay their fair share. But again, I share the same sentiments that I hope this whole presentation and this whole new study could be used to take them to court and make sure that they pay their fair share.
Council President.
Going back to day one.
Council President.
Okay.
Council President.
Councilman Vellis, I mean, I really want her to complete, because I mean, you just started, okay? But clearly, what Councilman McCoy and Councilman Rivera are talking about are, please understand where we're coming from. I mean, and specifically, our Dean of the Council, who has been here the longest fighting about this, and nothing has been done. So it isn't about you, just bear with us. Let's minimize, please.
Just quick. Yes, quick. Thank you, Council President. Ma'am, thank you for bringing this nice, beautiful presentation. And I got to pick up back what Councilman Rivera just said, because we were sitting here, and he just got in. The administration is the one that has to come clear and loud where we at with those claims with the other towns. The last sign they told us they was at the legal part, that they was in court or whatever was, but nobody had come saying, we in this stage. This is what we're going to do. So for the audience and the people out there, we'll be hoping that the administration, if they had something positive to say about that part, it will alleviate our concern and the people viewing out there, that we not just going after them, the taxpayer, the people that cannot even pay their electricity. Meanwhile, we have pending a lot of litigation with all these towns, and they are freely using still our connections, you know, with Patterson. So that's what I was going to say, because the administration could give us a highlight where we at on that, and when it's going to be finalized, and when the check is going to be cut to benefit our budget. You know what I'm saying? So that's all I was going to say.
Council President. Didn't you want to speak? You, you, okay, Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not sure if you were the company last time that did the presentation a few years, but there was a company here before, and I thought what they were going to do is they were going to go into court, figure out how much they really owed us from previous years, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. I thought we were going to take our chances in court and go after that money. And I'm not sure, Marge, what happened with that, because we were going to go after all those previous years, as Councilman McCoy is talking, is saying, all those other years that they have not paid. We just can't start from now and go forward. We need to get back some of that money from back then. And it might be 100 years.
And Councilmembers, I'm sure, she can't really answer this question. The administration has to be the ones to come to us. So let's continue with your presentation.
Well, that was in the plan, and I don't know what happened. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. But to address, I think, a few of those points, this study does look at what the tributary customers can pay you kind of moving forward, so that will provide that answer. Another point in terms of the data that we looked at was the revenues from the residential and non-residential customers compared to the water flow. And currently, you'll see that 70% of the revenues come from residential customers compared to 60% of the water use. And then 30% of the revenues come from non-residential, but they represent 40% of the water use. So there's a little misalignment, which we also considered. In terms of determining the cost for your sewer utility, we identified the operations and maintenance costs. That was developed by sitting with city staff and looking at the operations and maintenance budget to look at direct cost, Passaic Valley Sewer Commission cost, the sewer collection cost, billing cost. There's also indirect costs. We looked at other costs that also should be included to make sure we identified all the costs for the utility. We looked at the existing debt service for the sewer utility. And then finally, we did include a small portion of the long-term control plan, but we were asked to basically not add additional debt. As existing debt falls off, we could then increase the debt to maintain a flat debt level.
Can I interject, Council President?
Councilman Rivera.
Could you clarify that, because based on what you said, maybe I misunderstood. We would not, what would you do with the bonding that we do every year for emergency repairs?
We include what, the debt for the sewer system, so that should be reflected.
Yes, but going forward, it should be part of the utility.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, just one clarification. Okay.
Right. So to highlight, this only includes a very small portion of the long-term control plan, which is estimated to be about $400 million over 50 years. This only includes, what your, the rates that we're going to show only includes $29 million of that long-term control plan. So it just maintains your existing kind of debt level. When we look at all of those costs, and we look at it from a year-to-year basis, quickly to point out, the green bar shows the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission treatment cost, and then you'll notice all the other costs layered in existing debt services, the orange bar and so forth. What you'll notice is your existing revenues from your sewer rates basically currently just cover the cost that you pay to Passaic Valley Sewer Commission. So basically, what that means is there is a deficit funded from tax revenues. We are estimating about $5.7 million in 2019, and that's estimated to grow over the next several years to approximately $7.5 million in 2023. So that's currently picked up from the tax revenues. And what you'd need to basically eliminate this deficit is to raise rates either 13.5% per year, or if you wanted to do it all in one time, it would be about 53%. That's what we would need to do to eliminate the deficit. In terms of how that could be recovered, looking at the, as I mentioned before, the guiding principles of having the sewer rates reflect city policy to protect affordability of residential customers, that 13.5% would come, if it was just a one-year increase over a five-year period, of about 11% from the residential customers or 21% from non-residential. And if it was a one-time increase, you're looking at increasing the residential rates by 50%, and the non-residential would almost double to eliminate that deficit. And again, that doesn't include the long, the majority of the long-term control plan. We were also asked to look at an alternative rate structure. So what we looked at was establishing an alternative rate structure that have, would have two components. One would be a fixed component that would be based on meter size, and the second would be a volumetric component. This means that we assess the fixed and the volumetric to all the customer classes, but the volumetric rate would be uniform for each customer class. It would not decline like it currently does for small and direct customers. And it would require some reclassification so we could make sure that all customers are either classified as residential, non-residential, or those permitted industries that are billed directly by Passaic Valley Sewer Commission. The benefits of this rate structure is if you use water use, every customer pays for the water that they use. So it ties it exactly to what a customer is using. And secondly, it's consistent with the industry. When you look out in the industry, according to one survey that is conducted by the American Water Works Association in conjunction with our firm, it includes about 180 utilities nationwide. 95% of those utilities base their water rates, excuse me, set their sewer rates based on water flow as opposed to having a fixed rate. So in looking at the cost and allocating them, and between the fixed and the volumetric component and among customer classes, this is the, these would be the rates under the alternative rate structure. And again, we've shown them for, if you wanted to have a one, if you wanted to have an increase over five years, or if you had, wanted to have a one-time increase. What the top portion shows is a fixed fee by meter size that would be assessed based on that customer's meter size. And then based on their water flow, they would also be assessed a volumetric rate. This gets you to, this also eliminates the deficit. This is just an alternative way of recovering the sewer rates from all sewer customers. Under this alternative rate structure, you're going to have varying customer impacts. Anytime you change your rate structure, every customer is going to have a different impact. So that's, that is the one thing to keep in mind. And again, depending on whether you're looking at the, just the first-year increase or a one-time increase, customers will have, will experience different increases. One thing that's not on here that should be noted, though, is customers that use lower use could potentially have a negative increase. It is going to, it is going to have, customers are going to have different impacts. We also did a comparison of single-family residential bills using what we call non-essential water use, which is 50 gallons per person per day, and calculating that bill for the City of Patterson under these alternatives, as well as looking at neighboring utilities. You could see that currently, the City of Patterson's bill of $224 is the lowest among this group. And even if we look at the existing rate structure, but with full sufficiency, meaning getting rid of the deficit, or if looking at the bill under the alternative rate structure, those, both those bills would still, you know, fall within the average of this group. And we also show those utilities that use, base their sewer fee on water use. So there are quite a few of them that do use water use.
No, we have a question, actually. Council President? Before we go to the next slide, I noted that presentation, last time we, this was presented to us, we asked that, instead of using, you know, I think you have Jersey City there in Newark, that you would, that you would ask about the surrounding towns to see how they do their billing, because I have some reservations that I leave for the end of the presentation, but do you ever look into that, or no?
We did. We added the Wayne Township was the one, and then one of the other ones we couldn't get there.
Yes, but my initial question was, how do the other, because about 10 years ago, we did a similar presentation, and the intent was to bring it to become self-sufficient to, in order to create a utility. And the previous, in the past, what I, what we asked the council to do was do it over five years, and that never came to fruition, because, you know, I have my reservations about that, but we could talk about that later. But I wanted to know, and the reason I asked the question for you to bring to the table how the other surrounding towns do it, is to see if the actual, doing the billing based on volume was the best option that we have for the City of Patterson. That's what I wanted to arrive at, and I have some reservations that I'm going to bring up later, why I have those reservations.
We didn't specifically look at the neighboring ones, but from a national perspective, though, it is common, it is a common method used.
Councilwoman Mims.
Just a few questions. I know you have one more page, but some of my questions probably will be more to the administration. But to piggyback off of Councilman Rivera, my question is, I don't see a comparative analysis of the other municipalities. What was the increase? When you introduced this to Newark, what was that increase the first time? What was the dollar amount? Do we have anything that identifies that for Jersey City so that we can kind of see when it comes to us residentially or commercially? I mean, I know that the flow will change depending on the usage that the customer has, but I just want to see what it looks like, or what it looked like with those other towns in this study. So I don't know if it's here or not.
It's not, this comparison is simply looking at their existing rate structures and looking at one example of a customer and calculating the bill for those different...
So that's my recommendation. It's not here, so I'm asking that that can be a part of a future discussion whenever you come back or when we have a discussion. But I want to see what that looks like, because we're going to, if this is going to happen, I'm not saying it will, but if it does, we have to be able to communicate to the residents when this happens, or when this happened, this will be the rate change, or this will be the structural change, whatever that looks like, or this is what happened in other municipalities. So we need to have some data that identifies what that looks like in the past. A few other questions for administration, and maybe Marge will take this for Vaughn since he's not there. What internal controls will be needed to ensure equity? What will we need to do to ensure, internal controls to ensure that there's equity across the board for all residential, commercial, and then tax-exempt will be different? Who will monitor the efficiency of this control? Once we put a control in place, because there definitely needs to be internal controls, because it will be a shift change, it will be a structural change to what we're doing. And then who will be responsible for overseeing this entire process to make sure there's no fallout? What happens to the current process? How will we save that data? If something happens, do we have something that scrubs it to make sure it's complete? So I want to make sure, you know, that's something that's futuristic if this happens, but we need to think about those things, internal controls, who's going to be responsible, the current data of all customers' billing, all that stuff. That is very vital to whatever system change or whatever we're going to do with this, whether it happens or not, we have to make sure there's no fallout. So, but I definitely want to make sure we see those comparisons. What will be the percentage of increase? Because my concern is just because it worked in another town doesn't mean it's going to work in Patterson, right? And we have proven things in the past that it shows it doesn't. So I want to make sure that whatever we have, we have all data, and if it's not here, that we request it and we see it, so we can make some real tangible decisions. Okay?
Can we have her finish, please? Please, we need to, and I apologize, but we do need to expedite this, to end this presentation. All right? We have a lot of people outside, we, and we understand that they want to be heard, and we need to let them come into the chambers.
At the end?
I know, yes, that's why I want her to finish her presentation. Okay.
And there's just really just one last, this is just the last slide in terms of just, you know, you basically have been presented with two options in terms of rate structure. Continue with the existing rate structure or implementing a new one. There's obviously positives and negatives, some of which we've discussed. You know, the positive, if you stay with your existing one, customers know it, they're more familiar with it. If you change to a new one, it is going to require communication, administration, as you mentioned. You know, the negatives of staying with where, what you currently have is it doesn't tie exactly to water use and each customer paying for what they use. And that's what you could get with the new rate structure, as well as all customers paying similarly in a consistent fashion in terms of customer class.
Is that it?
That concludes.
Councilman Vellis?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. The comparison, single-family residential, and that's what caught my attention, is that page number 14, you comparing City of Clifton, Jersey City, City of Newark, Wayne Township, and the City of Patterson is not in that program, billing by use of a water, right? The City of Patterson is not participating now in that type of billing, correct?
That's, these, so we've just listed the municipalities up here and calculated the residential bill, and then shown which ones do use water use and which don't.
Correct. So you imagine where I'm going. You're talking about Wayne Township that is, has less houses than us, okay? Less houses than Patterson. And the customer's being charged 440, right? So you imagine one multi-dwelling building... So you imagine one multi-dwelling building, if they have 36 apartments, that if you, they are, for example, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or whatever, I will consider that one single-family in each floor, right? So if you look at the comparison that you have here, Jersey City, 541, city of Newark, 381, and Wayne Township that has less houses than us, as a one-single-family house, I'm talking a one-family house, 440, what will be, what do you think will be a two-family house? 840 a month?
For, for Wayne Township? I'm not sure.
800, no, no, for, for example, if, if a family, if, this is a single-family, and I'm taking the comparison of Wayne Township, that is a smaller township, has less houses than us, and it's one-family house, is $440 in their bill, okay? What do you think will be the bill for two-family house in Wayne?
I don't know.
So, you, you understand where we're going on this?
No.
You don't know? Okay. So you, you only comparing the one-family house in this study, in this, but not the two and the three?
Yes, we just looked at the residential customer in this example, that is correct.
In this one?
In, in this example, we've only looked at a single-family unit.
That's what I'm saying, one single-family house, and, and why not?
So you're saying you'd like to see a comparison of multiple families?
Yeah, what would be the two-house, the two-family house and the three-family house if they were sitting in, in Wayne? What would be their bill? Because?
Council president may, may answer that?
Yeah, hold on, and then you can answer. If you look at the bill for one single-family house, they're more likely, all of them not in the house 24 hours, seven days a week, and they come up to 440, I imagine the two-family house will be $880.
Councilman, it might be, we don't know. We can take a look at that and put those numbers together for a subsequent presentation of statistical data. But right now, this particular analysis was compared strictly on a one-family unit, because that was the easiest information to get from other municipalities.
Yeah, but the reality that we are in Patterson is that not all the houses is one-single-family houses.
That's right.
And we have two-family, three-family dwelling buildings, so that we have to look into that big picture to be able to give the right information to our constituents, what they will facing, they will face.
That's correct.
Down the road. Because I could come here and say, hey, you're gonna get a car that only fit four passengers for $24,000, and everybody say, well, I got a family of seven people, I can't fit in a four-passenger car, so why go to pay? So, you know, that's, that's the thing. I could bring here an analysis for one single-family house, and that will benefit the people, probably one single-family, but we got a multi-dwelling building, and we got two-family houses and three-family houses. What is the real number?
So there, there are quite a few questions that each of you has regarding this study. It's a huge project that we're working on and finally finishing, and we're happy to take that information and put those statistical data together, so that there's, there's a better understanding by the council, because ultimately, you will be making the decision and voting on this objective of changing things.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, council.
Kathleen, okay, Kathleen?
I just wanted to, to know, thank you, Council President, that we do have a lot of this information, separate and available, so I would love to share some of the details using our city information, and looking at, because a lot of them are already calculated as two units, and what that would look like as the new rate structure with an estimated volume, based on some real numbers of what particular houses have used in the past, what their bill would look like today. And I use the examples of, of some already, and I could look up others as you request it. So I would, I would love to be able to share some of that data, but, so feel free to, to make an appointment with me to, to go over some of that.
Council president?
The, the, the information is nice that you're giving it, with all respect, Chief of Stat, but the BA should be here if it's possible to clear it.
Okay, I actually, I actually asked the BA to do something, all right? That's why he's not present at this moment. I wanna wrap this up right now. Councilwoman Rivera, I know, can we, you sum up what you wanted to, because I know you said at the end you wanted to say something.
Just, just a brief comment.
Okay, and, and Councilwoman, I wanna wrap this up, I really wanna.
I just wanna add something to it, that's all.
Okay, so Councilman Rivera?
So, so to the homeowners that are watching this presentation, just wanna let you know that the discussion is still ongoing with the administration. We have to weigh the benefits of doing it over five years, which I don't think is a good idea, but we already tried that once. Doing the increase, if, if we decide to go that route, all it does is give additional revenues to the administration, and on top of that, you also get the tax, the usual tax increase. If you do it a one-shot, although you absorb, and again, it's as if we decide to go that route, if you do it one-shot, what, there's a lot of benefit to that, because ideally, what should happen is, the portion right now that we're picking up through taxes, which the nonprofit organizations and the schools and the counties and the hospitals are not picking up in the form of sewer fees, we're picking up in taxes, going to the regular taxpayers. And I wanna avoid giving, you know, doing that, penalizing basically the taxpayers twice through a sewer fee and through a tax. But that discussion we could have later on.
Okay.
And again, I just wanna assure you that we're not acting on this right now.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rivera. Councilwoman Patten?
Thank you, Council President. I would like for the administration to, to put, put together something for the last 20 years of what we in the city spent for sewer repairs, emergency sewer repairs, because I see you have 29 million over 10 years, but say the last 20 years, how much we spent, how much we, emergency we had to do. And then, you know, you really should also put together a list of 20 years, 30 years of, of how our rates moved. To me, that would be a good gesture to show, here it is, 2018, what the rates were in 20, in 1998, 2008, 2010, you follow what I'm trying to say?
I do.
But, but you need to put down in place also how much we done spent in the past 20 years on emergency sewer repairs, because most of that had to be bonded money, that we had to bond money for to fix the sewer.
That's correct.
So can you do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open at this time, as I said, to the family. Once again, as I, as I started in the beginning of this meeting, my condolences goes out to the Lowry family. I don't, I, I understand there's, there's a lot of mixed emotions, specifically outside, not understanding that we were not saying they couldn't come in, it was specifically so we were able to have what was previously already scheduled presentation. But we wanna give an opportunity to the family, if you wanna come before us and, and say a few words. I know that you have a lot of questions. We do have here our police director, we also have our fire director here. Our mayor did tell us that he would be here, but I guess he's not here. And again, all I can tell you, and council members, that this is under investigation, so there isn't much that we can speak freely about right now, but I know that the director has expressed to me that he did speak to the, to the family, to the mother and to the father about certain things, and that once that autopsy report comes back, that you would be the first to get this information. So Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
I have 18 speakers at this point, 18.
Okay, I'd like, is there anyone in the immediate family that would like to come forth? What you just need to do is state your name and your, your address. I, I'd like to give the opportunity to the immediate family, because I know a lot of people signed up, but I'd like the family to speak first. Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Sharik McFadden.
I can't hear you, sir. Can you bring up the?
Turn the mic. My name is Sharik McFadden. I live at 328 Thirtieth, Patterson, New Jersey. Jamique Lowry was my brother. I speak to my brother every day. I just wanna know if me and my family can sit down and have a conversation with the mayor, get to the bottom of this. We wanna know why was my brother released from the hospital in police custody and, to begin with, if he wasn't under arrest? We wanna know what happened to him from the complex back to the ER? We wanna know a lot of things. We, we just want justice. We wanna know why is my brother even come up with the conclusion that the cops were trying to kill me? Why? If we go to the cops to protect and serve, why is he screaming out, please don't kill me? Who's trying to kill me? The cops. Why? We wanna know why. That's all I got to say.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Patrice King. My address, 135 I-1A, that's the last address I have. Patterson, New Jersey, 07501. I'm the mother of Jamique Lowry. I have a few questions I need to know about. I wanna know, why didn't nobody help him? He came for help. I need to know why he went to the hospital and made it to, I mean, he went to complex, asked for help, and made it to the hospital like in less, like two hours? I need to know where that happened, what happened between them, hours that he left from the complex and to the hospital? I need to know why, how you say that? Why was, um, no, why wasn't a, a EMT or whatever you call it? Yeah. Why wasn't, he wasn't riding with him in the back of the ambulance? I wanna know why two cops was with him in there besides that, and I wanna know.
Who they are?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you had your turn. I need to know, who was these cops that went with him, scored him to the hospital? And I wanna know, well, who was the other police car was following them? I wanna know who was driving that ambulance car? I need to know all kinds of things. I really need to know. I'm really hurt. It's not even hurt, it's just loss. That's my son, I will never see him again. I won't hear, I won't hear his voice. I, I won't get a phone call in the morning saying, Ma, what you doing? You in the room? I need all that. And, and I have another thing. No disrespect to, to Patterson, I don't think I want any of these people doing no investigation. I wanna take it out of here, it need to be taken from Patterson, because then they gonna, they hiring, roaming the stuff under the rug. I would not let this go. I will not, because at the end of the day, yeah, okay, he was a, what, cricket for the cops with the thing? Former, whatever you call it, but at the end of the day, he didn't, he didn't deserve none of this. I didn't deserve none of this. His kids didn't deserve none of this. Like, I just need help, I need answers. And at the end of the day, I don't think I'm gonna get a fair one. I, I don't think I'm gonna get any kind of, no justice. If y'all, these, y'all people here, the cops, the detective, the, what you call it, prosecutors, anybody that's gonna handle this case, I don't think I'm gonna get a fair one. Everybody working for everybody, and I don't think that's right, because all these paperworks that I get from the hospital, none of these don't add up. Everything is different times, and then on top of that, how you gonna go to the hospital? I never knew you gonna go to the hospital at St. Joe's, and it takes what? What they say? 23 minutes and you discharged? Never that. If that ever happened, let me know. That's a miracle. I just need to know this. Like, I'm really hurt. I ain't thought I could do this, but my son gave me this compliment, like, fight for me, and I'm fighting, I'm fighting all the way. I don't care if everybody feel like I'm doing something wrong by saying, I don't want none of them people to take my case, go into all this. I ain't doing nothing wrong. If y'all think I'm doing wrong, sorry. I'm going justice, I need the truth, and I'm not going nowhere till I get the truth. If it takes me 10 years, I'm gonna keep on opening this case until I get the truth, 'cause it don't make no sense. It don't. And if y'all look at that video that he recorded, and he said somebody was, um, there, somebody there, y'all look at it real good, the shadows, it's the shadows, it's somebody was there. My son was not crazy, not at all. He was crazy for helping these cops, thinking they was gonna help, do what they said they was gonna do. They gave him a choice, no, they didn't give him no choice. Oh, they knew he was gonna do whatever he could to get his kids. That's the reason why he working with the cops. Oh, you do this, get this person, I'm gonna get you to get your kids out of dangerous, I'm gonna get you to get apartment wherever you wanna go, out of Patterson, out of Patterson. No. Yeah, well, and they was gonna pay for the rent for years, for a whole year, public service and everything. He felt like after that happened, nobody, excuse me, nobody did that. Nobody followed what they did. But do y'all know, it's gonna be justice coming? I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna get justice before I leave this world. If it kill me, I'm gonna get justice. And I, and I, I, I just need, may I, this for you, 'cause I think you do with the cops. I appreciate you calling me, you're giving me my condolences, but the problem is, you got a Facebook page, I had just got one, not recently though, but Facebook goes with answering questions, messages. I've been inboxing you. My son been inboxing you for three months asking for help. So for fact, he didn't get that, you didn't answer, and then you gave me, I sent you the video. I gave you the video, you ain't answered, but you was on Facebook, you was on Facebook. And to a point, I had to post it on your page, ask you a question, ask you to answer my question. I need help, that's all, I plead you. I said, please. I fought, I was out here passing, I got you in that seat, not just by myself, I helped. Rain days, cold, I had to pay people to babysit, I helped. I helped, that's all I asked you to do. Find who did this, that's all. I need that. And then you send me your inbox, inboxed me with your number. I called you, you didn't answer. I text you and say, oh wow, I called you, you didn't answer. I seen you looked at it. You ain't called me back until like 10 minutes later. And then I asked you the same question, why didn't you respond to my son? Oh, you think I got something, you blaming it on me? No, I did not blame nothing on you. If you felt like I blamed something, yes, he said that. I didn't blame nothing on you. If you felt that way, I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry. It's just I need answers. I was on my way up here when I called you, when I text you. I even text you with the thing that happened with the little boy, the death boy. I asked you to help me. I asked you. Now, in front of everybody, can you do everything in your power to help me? That's what you here for. That's all I'm asking. All, can you? If you didn't without, without, oh, without just saying, oh, 'cause all these cops is cricket, all of them. I ain't biting my tongue, I, I'm up, and to a point, and to the point that I knew they knew I was here. You know why? 'Cause at the hospital, you had, what's them people? Process school, in the hospital, questioning me, when, oh, I ain't even know nothing about it, I'm living Patterson. I made it here. And then the crazy part, he, oh, you know me? I don't know you. You, you was texting me, I'm the one that you, that Jamique was helping. Okay, good, Chris. Very much, Chris. And then, all of a sudden, I can't even think this other cop name, if I could get, no, at the end of the day, I tell you all, 'cause I'm fighting, I'm running, oh, so, I'm giving them too much? Okay, no more information. I just want help. I want answers, I need the questions, and I, I just need to know, would you? Would you?
Okay, one moment, please. Can, can I please, for, for a minute? Can, can I please, for, for, for a minute? I really don't have any words as a mother, okay? And I understand, um, you're hurting right now. I really, if she's gonna speak, I only need her to speak, okay?
But they gonna help me because some of these words is not, like, up to date with me. I ain't saying not, but these words, I just need help.
And, and, and believe me, that we have, and, and, and... I understand what you're saying, that right now, the way that you feel, you have no confidence. I understand that. Right now, this is at the prosecutor's office. There's this investigation going on. There is not much that we can say to you right now, but just say that, that we are very sorry and that we are going to work and make sure, and make sure that you get all of the necessary information and the help that is needed, and the entire family as well. There are certain questions that I know that can be answered. We have our police director here. We have our chief of fire. Um, with certain questions that you asked, um, specifically about that day, they're here. Um, our mayor, our mayor spoke to me earlier. Our mayor has been in contact as well. And all of this is also, but, but please understand that right now, up here, our hands are tied. So I'd like you, um, at this time, if, if, if you...
I appreciate it.
If you can complete, conclude, uh, um, your address to us, uh, to the administration, um...
For y'all could be killing me?
I'm sorry?
No, what you mean, Teresa? I need one more thing. I need, I'm, no disrespecting, no disrespect.
No.
No disrespect, and I'm not giving nobody no names, but my sons, my two sons in jail, in the juvenile. My son called me. You got two cops officers coming down here harassing him, then getting kids that's in here to fight my kids. At the end of the day, they was part of, they were telling mess, too. So at the end of the day, I need help. And I don't need, how do I get outside to come in, do my investigation? Like, I don't want none of this out of the town.
I'd like the mayor, I'd like the mayor to address.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah.
Excuse me, be quiet.
If I may. So the last Saturday of two thousand and eighteen, I was at a restaurant on Broadway. And a young man entered the restaurant, and he said, "I've always wanted to meet you. Seen you on Facebook." The young man was Jamique. It was a very pleasant conversation we had. It was so pleasant to the fact that I told him, "If you ever wanted to visit me at City Hall, you have an open invitation." Unfortunately, that meeting will never happen at City Hall. And I had asked him for his phone number so I can stay in touch with him, because I was encouraged by our conversation. And he said he didn't have, he didn't have a phone. So, we want facts. I've been working on this since Saturday, when we spoke. When I told you I'd been in constant contact with the prosecutor. And then beyond that, I've canceled appointments Monday, Tuesday, so I could focus on getting not just answers, but accurate answers. We want the truth. Everyone wants the truth. You want the truth, and I want the truth as well. I'm sure you have not slept. And that's why I called you this morning, because I've been in contact with Reverend Lagard, who's handling the funeral arrangements, and told him if there's anything I can do, I will. And I told you that this morning when I called you again. If there's anything I can do, I will. I'm pledging to you that I will. Because I care about you and your family. And for the short time that I met Meek, cared about him too. Because I was looking forward to that meeting at City Hall. I would have loved to have a conversation in my office and have him have the opportunity to visit a mayor at City Hall. For some people, that's a big deal. And when he came into that restaurant day, that day, I could tell he wanted to meet me. And he wanted to have an opportunity to talk to somebody who's in a position that could potentially help more people, and he wanted to be helpful as well. So Ms. King, I want to assure you that we've spent the last four days, not just trying to get answers, but accurate answers. And we will get those accurate answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up?
My name is Jamelia Laurie. I live one sixty twelfth Ave. I am Jamique's sister. We just want answers. We want to know what happened. We want to know what happened from him, what happened to him from the complex to the ER? And if you've seen the video and you've seen the picture of him at the hospital? His face was totally different. He, they say he was on drugs. Drugs don't do that to your face. He had a broken cheekbone. He had a shot, a shattered eye socket. He had stitches. He had bruises all over his body, literally hand marks. He had scratches. What was wrong with him? If y'all said that, he did, nobody could tell the nurse. Nobody, an EMT, a cop, uh, nobody could tell the nurse. How long was he unresponsive? They left him in the waiting room. When they found him, in the wait, in the hallway of the ER, if they, when they found him, he had no pulse. If he had no pulse and his body was cold, as cold as y'all say it was? Why did y'all try to revive him? Why didn't y'all call the morgue? Why did y'all give us false hope? Why? Thirty-two minutes? It went from five to seven minutes, him, them not having the pulse? To ten to fifteen minutes, now to thirty to thirty-two minutes? After five to seven minutes, you should have never tried to revive him. You should have never, never. And if you knew he went that long without oxygen? You should have had everything on standby. Dialysis, blood, 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 extra blood. You should have did all that. Why were we not, why were we not able to go in the back at certain? It was too many times for long periods of time that we were not allowed in the back. I had to sneak another way around the hospital to get in the back, to find the officer in the back after we said we didn't want no officers in his room. That should have never happened. It should have never happened, never. I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted. My brother, he pleaded, he cried, he begged, and we wasn't there. Nobody was there. They, he, he gave us, he gave where he was at. He said, "If anything happened to me, the cops killed me. I'm gonna be dead in two hours." And the cops did it. They did, they, they, they knew he was recorded. They didn't know that he was on Facebook Live. So I guess, I guess, they just thought it was okay. And if you notice at the end of the video, the phone was snatched from his hands. They laughed at him in the video. They thought he was drugged. He said he was off E pills and everything to get to the hospital because it was a safe haven. I know my brother. I talk to my brother every day. He talk to us every day, all of us. He take time, he got a time when he call all of us. He knew this was gonna happen. He told us it was gonna happen. He told the world what was gonna happen. And initially, in two hours, what happened? He died. No one has answers. No one has answers. Why? All we want is answers. All we want is answers. And then, we, we asked him, first of all, whoever the guy Chris is, he came up there under, having us under the pressure that he was the prosecutor. We, the family, we had a little, a little altercation in the room because we like, "No, he's the prosecutor. No, he's the prosecutor." He told us he was the prosecutor. Why do you have his phone if he's not? If I had his phone, no one should have took his phone from me. I had his phone. Why, why, why is his phone in, 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 under, with you guys for investigation? If he wasn't under arrest? Why was he released to the police officers after the first time he came? Why was he, why was he even being up at the emergency room if he telling you he need help? Twenty-two minutes? Twenty-two minutes in and out of the hospital? No way. That's a world's record. That's a world's record. No way. No way. You guys are, not you, but Patterson Police is a joke. We're not dumb. Mickey, we here. You hear us? Mickey, we here. We riding. You rode to the wheels, fellow? And we gonna ride to our last. Mickey, we not going nowhere, and it's not gonna stop. We gonna get answers. We gonna get justice. Mickey, we're here. How do we go about, how do we go about getting all of this to a different county for everybody? We need different people. We don't need nobody in New Jersey Patterson till the beginning. Nobody, nothing should be, we don't need nothing to be swept under the rug. No, no, we need a proper investigation. We need a proper investigation. I'm so hurt. My heart hurt. It hurt. I can't explain how I feel because I don't know how I feel. I can't go to sleep at night. I've been up since this happened. I cannot sleep. Do you hear me? I cannot sleep. That video plays, "No, I'm okay. I'm okay. Go sit down." That video plays in the back of my head, twenty-five eight. I could tell, I could repeat the video word from word, what happened to my brother? Because he crying, I wasn't there. Nobody was there to help him. Nobody was there. Why? You have detective, you, you cops are here to protect and serve, and you did nothing. You didn't neither. Nobody did neither. Nobody. And then for the young lady, the cop that laughed, that he asked to come to the, in the car while he trusted you for a second. He asked you to ride with him, and you told him, "No". You said the fire department. I mean, the EMTs, right? He said, "I don't trust them. I went to the hospital already. I got jumped there already." The fire depart, if, the guy, the fire, the firefighter told him, "We're not EMTs. We're Patterson Fire Department. And if you felt like that, and he went with you, he trusted you after that, which we don't know because the camera was snatched out his hand, you should have rode in the back with him." If he's saying police is trying to kill him, you should have been sus, you should have been suspicious. You should have never let no cop in the back of the EMTs with him. He, what happened to him, y'all? What happened to him? Please, could somebody tell me what happened to him? All we want is answers. We want justice, and this would not be swept under the rug. I swear, Mickey, I swear to God, baby boy. Mickey, we riding, and we not going nowhere. We want answers. We gonna get answers, Mickey. This is not over. You left a blueprint for a reason. You left a blueprint for a reason. And we gonna get, Mickey... I'm sorry if I tell you not to go live all the time, but Mickey, this was the best live you could have ever made. This guy right here is gonna get you murderers. It's gonna get you murderers. Because if you look in the video, he wasn't, he was hallucinating. He was, he wasn't seeing things. He know what he saw. And for the cop to try to flash the light like this, no one's right here, just Patterson Police? Yes, he was talking about Patterson Police was trying to kill him. They was trying to kill him, and initially, they killed him. He would never tell his story. So he has us as one, as his family. We gonna get answers. He has us, and we gonna tell his story until it's told. We gonna keep telling it. We gonna keep sharing. We gonna keep coming out here. And I'm letting y'all know, we here every Sunday. We gonna be here every Sunday. As a family, was it five of us, Tuesday? Sorry, I apologize, Tuesday. Well, if it's five of us, uh, five hundred of us, we gonna be here, and we not gonna stop until we get answers. Y'all got, did y'all do Patterson Police? Y'all messed with the wrong one. Y'all messed with the wrong one. His sister here, me standing, is not letting nothing ride. Our family here, your family, Mickey, we are not letting nothing ride. What happened to him? From the complex to the ER? Why are they lying? The documents are wrong. It's not adding up. Why did y'all say, why, why? He was, it took two hours. Hour forty-five minutes, you might as well say two hours, from the complex to the emergency room. Let me tell you something here. It was, they said three thirty in the morning. At three thirty in the morning, there's no traffic out Berry. Why, now they saying it took fifteen minutes? It didn't take fifteen minutes. Nobody was on the road. You have sirens. You could get through the lights without the sirens. You don't have to stop. It should have took you three to five minutes, not even five, three to four minutes to get there. If he stopped bringing down the road, it was your job to stop right there, and you did CPR him? You called for backup? You were documenting, you documented everything. Why was none of that documented? Why couldn't nobody tell the nurse what happened? Why did the nurse have to call for extra help because she said, she knew that it was foul play? Why? Why? He didn't get the proper help. And then the, uh, we need, can, can y'all help us get the security cameras from St. Joe's? In the emergency room and outside the emergency room? Can y'all help us get the cameras from inside the complex and in front of the complex? Can y'all help? Can y'all help? Can y'all help? Can y'all help? I have so many questions. I have so many questions. So many questions. And if I, if I finish them, we gonna be here all night, and I ain't gonna do that. I'm gonna let someone else get a turn, but I have so many questions. This is not over. Mickey, we riding with you. We fighting. Mickey, we here. We are here for you. And, and another thing. Went to Dunkin' Donuts today to try to ask to get the security cameras. Why did you guys get the security cameras? Patterson Police get the security cameras? That Saturday, prosecutors and them came and got it that Saturday morning. They had us up at the hospital, and they were stalling us. He was gone already. There was no hope. Why did y'all give us false hope? There was no hope. He was gone already. That right there was a cover-up to keep us at the hospital. Why did y'all do that? He didn't deserve that. He was twenty-seven. He was trying, he was trying to do things with his kids. He had plans. He has kids. He has two sons. He has a daughter. Her birth, her first birthday is next month. He talked about planning her first birthday party non-stop. Non-stop. He had another chance. And y'all got, you guys, why did y'all give him false hope that he was gonna get his kids back? Why did y'all do that? Y'all knew that his kids was his heart, his world, and if y'all told him that, he was gonna do whatever. If y'all told him to go murder someone, and he was gonna get his kids back, he was gonna do that. Why did y'all do that? Like, why? I have so many answers. Lord, please, I have so many answers. It hurts so bad. No, because it hurts so bad. It hurts so bad. Why? I'm still stuck on the, the guy Chris. He came up there, and he lied and said he was a prosecutor. Why, why was, why did he lie? Why was there cops in his room after we repeatedly said that there should be no cops in his room? Why? Why were we not allowed in the back for hours and hours at a time? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rashid King, 317 Van Houten Street.
Can you speak into the mic?
Y'all say, y'all say that, you know, y'all feel, y'all feel our pain. Y'all don't feel our pain, until you lost a child, then you feel my pain. Just know that, you'll feel my pain. For the last four days, I've been living in hell. I thought I was living in hell all of my life until my son, my son, my firstborn. My firstborn. I couldn't wait till he come in the world, and I had to see him go out like this. This is some, this is some crazy, crazy nonsense that's going on. You got people on the streets that's supposed to protect and serve us. This supposed to be a great city of Patterson, man, this supposed to be a great town. You putting these, you putting murders on the street. You putting murders on the street, man. They murdering our kids. Before they even see a future. They murdering all our kids. Now, if that happened to your kids, you have all kinds of FBI all up in this shit, right? Well, excuse my language, excuse my language, you have FBI all up in it, right? I want you to treat this like this was your kid. Because I ain't gonna never see him again. A picture don't mean nothing, man. I ain't gonna get to feel what I want from a picture by looking at him on a wall. Or looking in a frame at him. I can't touch him and grab him and hold him and kiss him on his cheek and say, yo, man, I love you. Daddy love you. I can't do that no more. I gotta give him that last, that last touch when he go, before he go down in that ground. You ever experienced that? Any one of y'all ever experienced that? I don't think so. I never experienced that to, for a kid. But now I gotta, I gotta experience this thing. Something I never want to experience, I ain't never want my, I ain't never want to bury my kid, I want my kid to bury me. Who wants to bury their kid, man? You, you want to bury your kid? Any one of y'all want to bury your kid? But I, I gotta bury my kid. I have to do this. All I'm saying, man, treat this like this was yours. Yeah. I mean, when it came very close to the very bitter end, you know, the doctor checked my son and said, "Ain't no pulse." He was there all day, up until my son had no pulse, and he grabbed his shit and left. Immediately, ain't say bye and nothing. No time of death and nothing, just left. What doctor does that? And he told us that he was threatened, he feared for his life. Get these murders off the street, man. Help us. If you ain't start nowhere else before, start right here. Right here. This where it needed to start at, alright? Because you ain't starting nowhere before. So start, make it, make it happen right now. Help us. Help my family. My kids ain't gonna see their brother no more. His mother ain't gonna never see him anymore. His kids ain't gonna never see him anymore. He's not gonna be able to grow old to see his grandchildren. But the murderers that you got on the street gonna see theirs though. I want you to take everything from them. Everything. Just like they took it from us. You understand what I'm saying to you? Do you get me?
I'm listening to you, sir.
We need this to happen. And I don't just want you to say, you hear me, you get me. I want you to do something. Actually get up and do something. I'm tired of people talking about, alright, we gonna do this, we gonna help you out, don't worry about it. It's in the mail. No, actually get up and do something, man. Make it happen. We want justice. We want it today. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, Rashid King, 317 Van Houten Street. Um, it's a lot, it's a lot for my family to take in right now. My heart goes out to my brother and my sister-in-law deeply. I can't imagine what they go, I, I mean, I can't say what I know what they going through, what they feeling, because I still have my kids, thank God. But at the same time, this was my nephew. We gonna skip all the scenarios. We gonna skip the timeframe that's, that's missing. We gonna miss all that. We gonna talk about the video. The video shows that he was perfectly fine. Like, we all sitting up here looking fine and groomed and everything. The only thing that was wrong with him, that he was forming at the mouth. And he had no shoes on. So keep that, stay with me, keep that in mind, right? So, from that timeframe just alone, how the hell did he end up in a hospital bed damaged the way he was? Answer that question for me. What happened? That's what my family's looking for. You can try to say-
Looking like this.
Exactly. Y'all can zoom in on that.
That's how he looked.
That's what my family, this is what they looking for, this is what their brother and sisters looking for, this is what their mother and father's looking for. We, it's a lot. It's a lot.
That's how he looked. Difference, totally difference from the law.
And I come with-
They didn't touch him.
I come with respect. This is no point, no fingers. But the truth will reveal. Trust me, because I serve a higher power. And it's nothing that you can do that would not come to light. You might think your life is good, you might think you living a life because you got this, you got that. But the same way he blessed you with it, the same way he could take it away. So, as my brother and my sister-in-law said, we all have kids. I have three children biologically, but I raised four more, so that makes me five, seven children. And these kids in these streets are my children. Whether their parents are home, working, or they out, because this is what a lot of people don't understand. This is what a lot of people don't understand, where I was coming up, you had to respect your elders. You had to respect your elders, if not, you got your behind work. Not by just your parents, your grandparents, your aunts and uncles, and maybe your big cousins too. And I say this to say that, we all have children. And just like my brother said, if it was one of your children or one of my fellow police officers, the FBI would be up in this place. This is not a racial thing, but at the same time, we feel like no questions are asked. My family is not acting out on against the police station, but at the same time, they're looking for answers, and the main people that can answer them questions is Patterson Police Department. This is what they get paid to do. So again, and I'mma close. Let's forget about the time. Look at the video, he was fine. He was fine. So how can you answer, or you sit up here and say, from that, from when the paramedics came and got him? And he went, went to the hospital? Where the bruises and stuff come from? Where the swelling and stuff come from? Where did the blood and stuff come from? Where the scratches on his arms come from? Where the sock, the, the broken eye socket come from? Where did this happen? And only people that answer that is the people that was on the video, and that's Patterson Police. And that's Patterson Fire, Fire Department. But again, I'm not making no assumptions, but the truth will reveal. Trust that. And like my sister-in-law said, it might take five years, it might take ten years, it might take thirty years. We ain't going nowhere. Because this is one child. This is one child that would not be swept under the rug. Trust me, believe that. Thank you for your time.
Counsel President.
I really want to let-
Good evening. My name is Mona Boz, I live eighty-five dash three A Presidential Boulevard, Patterson, New Jersey. It's one of the saddest things I ever experienced. My friend Patrice Lorry was on Facebook live, and she was telling us here in Patterson, "Pray for my son. I need y'all help in Patterson." It's the saddest video I ever seen in my life. When her son was streaming live on Facebook. I'm jumping out my bed saying, what is going on? Where is Trice at? Is Trice up here? What's going on? And he's speaking his death. And people standing around, and he's asking for water. A sip of water. Give me a sip of water, I'm thirsty, I need help, help me. The Fire Department is the EMTs. They should be riding in the back. These are our kids, those are our kids downstairs. This is not just, her son is my son, is your son, is everybody's son. It's all our sons. William McCoy, that could have been your son. Lisa, it could have been your nephew or nieces. Michael, you know, it could have been any one of us. It could have been me. I want somebody to help me. If something happened to me, help me. He was begging for help in the police department, and they did nothing. How did we lose our child going to the hospital? We can't lose kids like this. These is our babies, these is my babies. Every last one of them, I don't care what their name is, I don't care what color they are, they belong to us. They belong to you, we put you there for this reason. The police is supposed to protect us, not kill anybody. Not one of them. You do your best to make sure that these kids is safe. They crying out, you see them crying out out there? They not causing no riot, they crying out for help. We don't know what's going on. They being pulled over and told, threatened from our own police. You gotta talk for me, you gotta help me set up stuff. They can't even talk to their parents. They scared. These kids are scared. They not even talking to us, because they don't think we would believe it. I believe everything, I believe it. Look. Look at them. These is our kids. They belong to us, this city belong to us. They work here, they don't live here, and they working in this city, they don't care about our kids. We hiring people from outside, paying them three times much that we shouldn't be paying them. They coming from Little Falls. They coming from Willing Park, taking these jobs, and they not doing anything. Nothing. It's time to stop paying them for stuff that they ain't doing. She should not have to be riding up this from North Carolina or South Carolina worried and telling her son to hold on, I'm coming. And then get here, he's not here. Well, she can't even get in the back to see her own son. It won't go unnoticed. And everybody want to get re-elected. This family, this family, the Kings and the Lori, you have messed with a big community. This is a big community. You won't go back in until we get justice. That's all I have to say.
How everybody doing out there? Good evening. My name is Basya Clyburn. I'mma state some facts, I'mma state some facts, some actual facts. Well, man, first I got a question for you. You say you met Mickey King at the restaurant, Brody Pizza sign? You wanted to greet him, you want to bring him to the, uh, to the office, you know, first come to office to meet y'all, you know, talk? No, no, no experience? When he was reaching out for three months straight to you, why you didn't respond back to him? He was begging for help. Why you didn't respond back to him? Just ask my question. You, you, you want to sit up here and talk about when you met him last month? We ain't talking about last month, what about the three, the three months he was reaching out to you? When he's reaching out to you, no responses, right? But you're supposed to be here to protect us, oh, yeah. I'mma tell y'all one thing, listen, man. Friday morning, I got off of work, I was talking to Jamique and Heidi. Out there for six hours talking to them. Talking about old times, good times, bad times, what we went through, what we been through. I never thought that was gonna be the effing day. That, I never thought that, that, that was gonna be my last goodbye saying I love you. Before I walked away, I say, I love you, cousin, I love you, honey, big hugs. I woke up late in the evening to this mess. But like I said, he, Mickey, despite whatever he did, whatever he did, whatever he was doing out there, he was doing it just to get his kids back. So he, he helped y'all get convictions. Okay? In return, we all know it was BS, man. The cops lied to him. They lied to him. At the end of the day, we, we all in pain right now, I'm living in hell right now, man. Michael Jackson, you met me at the Fire, the Fire Department down there, man. I ain't never go to college, but I'm book smart and I'm street smart. When I talked, when I got on that stage and talked to, to, to them, to, to people that was my age and younger, they felt me. I changed my life. I stayed out them streets. I stayed out of jail. Stop selling drugs. But back to you though, man. Why haven't you responded to, why haven't you responded to Jamique ninety days, ninety days straight? Why? It's had to take for something like this to happen. You know what? Let it be known, when it happened, you should have got, you should have got up out your bed. Uh, Saturday, coming in the Sa- Friday, coming in the Saturday morning, up, up at the hospital, find out what the fuck is going on. You should have got out your bed, but why, but why is these fake prosecutors up there? You know what, li- listen, I'mma tell you something. Whoever that prosecutor is, Chris, fake prosecutor, I questioned him. He had no answers for me. No, he said to me, I'm like, who are you? Well, who are you? I'm Clyburn, who are you? Prosecutor, okay, uh, what you doing here? What do you know prosecutors be, what do you know? Everybody, please, with their homework, please. What do you know prosecutors to be at the hospital late hours of goddamn night? What do you know that? You know about the cops, detectives, yeah, but a prosecutor? I think, come on, prosecutors? So my question is this. Everybody that came up that they prosecutors, right? So I'm like, how many prosecutors it is in Base Camp? Who y'all telling that BS to, man? Who? Who? At the end of the day, look, I'm here to make a statement, man. Look, I questioned that prosecutor, I asked him, listen, what happened to my cousin? You know what he said? You know what he says? His exact word was, "We found him like that." Oh, y'all found him like that, okay. But here it is. You, you saying y'all found him like that, right? Okay, so, where did y'all find him at, sir? Where did y'all find him at like that? Oh, the, oh, oh, the EMT camp, no, they, 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 they put it in the records. I'm like, that's bullshit? Listen, man, any two time, you get into an accident or you get shot, anything. When the EMT come pick you up from a location, they, they can pick you up from 317, it's now. They gotta document all that stuff. So how the hell you gonna tell me they didn't document it? That's BS, man. You know what time it is now. You know what time it is. Listen. We all know, to get a broken bone, I'm, 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 I'mma name facts. Puss somebody in their mouth, or their jaw, you can fracture their jaw, break their jaw, you can break their nose. But to break their cheekbone or bone in your forehead, he had to get hit with a knife stick. I'm, I'm naming facts, he had to get, he had, he had to get with excessive force. You understand me? Me watching that video, seeing my cousin beg for help, and I, and I, and I questioned the prosecutor on this too, I questioned him on this too, I questioned him on this too, and I said to him, I'm like, um, I'm like, listen, me ask you something else. You watched the video several times, right, sir? Yes. Alright. Okay. You see him begging for water, right? Yes. Okay, so, why they didn't give him no water, man? It's a protocol, it's a, uh, oh, that's your answer. That's a protocol to give somebody water when they said they dehydrated? And if you, and, 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 and if, and if you look at the police officers in the background, they laughing at him. They laughing, clear as day, they laughing. Clear as day, if you watch the video, several times you watched the video, clear as day, you see a fucking shadow in the corner. The boy ran for his life. He came to the complex to get help, thinking he was gonna get help from there. Y'all missing the whole point here. Like the mother said, like my cousin said, like my aunt said, like, like, like his father said, what if that was y'all kid? What if that was one of y'all begging for water? But, but, but all of, but all, but all y'all, but all y'all think, no, y'all think, we, we, y'all think we, we supposed to stay calm? We supposed to stay calm? Ain't no calm, man. Listen, man, at the end of the day, if y'all don't do nothing about this in a short amount of time, we gonna turn Patterson upside down. Remember my face? Remember my face? Remember everybody's face? It's BS, man, it's BS. And clear as day, we know cops did that, man. We know cops did that. Come on, he said, he, clear as day, he saying it, and he saying it in the video. He said it, and I, and, and like I asked the prosecutor, the fake prosecutor. Fake prosecutor, quote-unquote, fake prosecutor, right? I asked him. I'm like, listen, well, he, he was the prosecutor at the hospital, so he said, Chris, I ain't get his last name, but I, I'll never forget his face. Chris, I asked him, I'm like, listen, why would that conversation his phone? Hey, now he had no answer for it. Listen. I asked him, why would they count, I'm like, why would that conversation his phone? You know, you know, you know, why they took his phone? They knew what was in that phone, and, and they knew what he had, they knew what he had against him. Okay? I'm like, listen, the only two times you supposed to conversation somebody's phone, if it's dealing with a drug case or a murder case. Period. Clear as day, the man was under, under, under arrest, why did y'all take his phone? And, 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 and another thing, another, another thing I raise my eyebrows, and I raise thousands and thousands of millions of people eyebrows, I want to know what we want to know. Why them cops saw him in sleeve that was at the complex? And who put them on my sleeve? Who? 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 Listen, I'm, 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 I'mma say it again. I, I'mma say it again. I'mma say it again. And raising, that right there raises my eyebrow, and it raises a thousand, thousand, hundred thousand people eyebrows, millions of people eyebrows. The cops up in that complex, they are administrated lead, whatever you want to call it, I may be saying it wrong, but y'all get the picture. They are administrated lead with pay. At the end of the day, we want to know, I want to know, we want to know. Who went down there and put them on administrated lead? And why? They must have seen something, no. None of us seen shit. At the end of the day, like everybody said, this shit ain't getting swept under the rug, man. And hey, because you got, like I said, you gotta think about it, what if it was one of y'all kids, man? Y'all see the, y'all see the boy begging for help? Hey, man, are you gonna answer my question that I asked you? I'm stuck on you, look, my name Basya Clyburn. Alright? I changed my life around, alright? I'm a hard-working man now. I've been working for over three years. Alright? I ain't in the streets no more. But listen. I'll come back, man. I'll come back. That's my cousin. That's my cousin. It wasn't like, it wasn't like we was, uh, it wasn't like we had a relationship from here to there, no, we was here when we met up with each other. Twisted, talking about everything. Cried together, everything. So like I said, you want to talk about when you met him in December? How you want to bring him to the, to the office and all that for, for his experience, right? But you yourself, I know you seen him and boxing for help. Why didn't, for three, for ninety days straight, why didn't you reach out and help that man, man? Why? All this could have been prevented. He, yo, he, he could have gave the officer's name, all this shit could have been prevented, man. All of it. All of it. Listen, boy, and not only that, any two times somebody wildin' out like that, wildin' out ain't right, they supposed to detain him, put him in a holding cell, why they didn't do that? They could've prevented that. Pay attention to all actual facts though. But, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say it like this, man, I ain't been racist, it's about this. If, if, if that was somebody else, bruh. Listen, man, I'm letting everything out, it is what it is, man. At the end of the day, I'm not waking up in fear every day, I'm not scared of no police, I'm not scared of no detectives, I'm not scared of none of y'all. It is what it is, man. If y'all gonna hurt me next, hey, man, be my guest. It is what it is. Nobody say I had to wake up, uh, with cops sitting outside their house, detectives sitting outside their house. Why they sitting outside people's house? Why? Why? And then, if y'all don't believe that, we got that on the phone. Do, do y'all wanna see that? Do y'all wanna see that? Everybody is quiet here. Do y'all wanna see that? It's something that, it's something that y'all people know that we don't know. At the end of the day, it's something that y'all people know that we don't know, man. And like, my question to you, man, like I said, so answer my question. Like, I, 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 I'm not coming at you rude disrespect for you. Like I said, my name Basse Clayburn, listen, he reached out to you, you the mayor. You the mayor. Now, you gonna answer my question, please?
Mayor.
Thank you. First, Ms. Clayburn, my condolences on your loss.
I'm not talking about that.
Second, I'm glad that, and it's encouraging to hear that you are getting your life together. Third, sir, I checked my inboxes, did not receive anything. But when I saw him, when I saw him, the conversation, let me just finish, let me just finish. When we saw each other, he came into the restaurant, wanted to say hello. I extended an invitation to City Hall, so it's an open invitation, he can always come in and speak to me. When I asked for his phone number, he said he didn't have a phone, because I wanted to stay in touch with him. So, that's the extent.
My next question is this though. Why they won't give us his phone?
Sorry?
Why they won't give us, why they won't give us his phone?
I don't know that answer.
That's the next question, see?
Okay. I, I, please, I, I, and I, I, I really,
Listen, swear, swear, please, please.
One, one moment, please.
Do you have a chat?
I, I have given everyone an opportunity to speak, I'm not interrupting anyone. But I do, please, I mean, there is a certain decorum here in this, in this chambers. Um, you can't be yelling out from, if you're not standing at the microphone. We do need to, we do need to wrap this up, and I do have our dean of the council who'd like to say a few words. Before the dean wraps it up, I have our vice president, Mike Jackson, who asked for the floor.
Madam President?
Director, what, wait.
Just a minute.
One moment, councilman, please, one moment. Director Spiezal.
Good evening. I, I spoke with the family already and expressed my condolences.
Can I have your attention, please?
We know each other from my time as a decade as a sheriff, from my five years here as a police director. They know what I'm all about. I don't wanna see anybody lose their son. And if we are responsible, we will be responsible. However, what I wanna do is just clarify a couple issues so you understand it. The water issue. When somebody has substance at their mouth.
Council President, can I interrupt? That, that is not appropriate for this forum right here, right now, in public. I think, I, 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 I really,
One, one moment, Mr., Mr. BA, one moment. Corporation counsel, I think the question that they had in the address, I, I, I think it's something, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with him answering that piece of it. He's not going, he, he, it is a fact that he's given, he's not specifically talking anything that is part of the investigation per se. So I see, Mr. BA, I'm sorry, but I don't see anything wrong with answering a question concerning what everyone feels they need an answer for, why didn't you give him water? I think that should be addressed. To go further into the investigation than I, and I'm sure, you know more than me, director, that you're not going to do that. I said that I don't see anything wrong with you answering that about the water.
Procedures, that's procedures. That's procedures.
I'm sorry, I can't, I, Director.
Look, I, 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 I pray with you, I know you all want answers, we want answers. We want the truth. We want nothing but the truth. Understand that through the Attorney General guidelines, we will get the truth. And the reason for the prosecutor, he was a prosecutor sergeant. And the reason I know that is because I spoke to the captain. So I knew that a sergeant would be there, so no Patterson police officers could be there. The Attorney General's office gets notified. Everything will be systematically done, and an autopsy will bring the cause of death. Once we know that, we will have answers. We will know what we're dealing with. But please, we need peace in the city, and in, in, for the safety of everyone, for you, for everyone. Let's have peace, let's move forward, let's get to the bottom of it. We want those same answers. We want that truth as well as you do. So I assure you that we have removed ourself in accordance with the guidelines. Just listen, we are not allowed, no, no, it has nothing to do with the lead. What's that? Okay. Go ahead, okay. With regard to the Attorney General guidelines, just so you know, that case from the second something happens with a Patterson police officer and someone is injured, it's out of our hands, we turn it over to the prosecutor, and the Attorney General's office is notified. And as of the sergeant, his responsibility is to preserve and protect all of that. That's just the way it works in the system. That keeps us out of it. You understand? So that it's an independent investigation, and that's what the prosecutor is doing. The prosecutor doesn't, uh, discuss that with us, they will do the autopsy, everything will come out, and then we will know where we stand, and the answers will be given to you. I want you to have those answers. Right or wrong, I want you to have those answers. But we need to have that cause of death and understand what we're dealing with. And then we will take it from there, okay?
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director. Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. It goes, it goes without saying that, that, um, mine, as well as I'm sure everybody else's heart bleeds for this, this family. For me, the most difficult part and heart wrenching part is every time we seem to have this scene, it's the African American community that's coming before this, this council. The treatment, the actions of our community, the bar must be raised. Our expectations must be raised. You guys are entitled to an answer, point blank. But I'm gonna say this. I'm urging each and every one of you to stay diligent. We've seen these scenes play out before. Justice for, those are the, the same inscriptions on these signs that we see. Just shortly, short time ago, it was Justice for Jake. But at times, but at times, but at times, that mother is left standing with a few people. My point is, until our community decides to wake up and continue to band together, we'll continuously be coming to this microphone asking for somebody else to give us justice. I'm hoping that the mayor finds a way to make sure that this family gets answers. But I'm also urging you to allow certain things to play out and make sure that you don't sit quietly. All this information, young lady, I have people texting me talking about how emotional they are at home based on the testimony you brought forward today. We need all that information. The prosecutor's office already released a press release. They've already released a preliminary press release, letting us know that the autopsy is being conducted by the state of New Jersey. So you don't have to worry about whether or not there's impropriety within the Patterson Police Department. I'll say this, and as being the last thing, I'm much like you. The reason I sit here in this seat is because my faith in the system had diminished. I was arrested, falsely accused in the past as well. But the thing is, at this moment, the person that we have sitting in the chief's seat, I have full faith and confidence in. The moment he became the chief, he's, he did his job in making sure that the crooked officers, selling drugs out of their units, they was targeted the same way that other people, cause I complain all the time. Why are my people being targeted all the time? I got the call four AM, I text the director. He responded automatically. We called an emergency public safety committee meeting, just to discuss the details of this situation. I'm urging you to stay diligent. We can't, we continuously, when I say we, we, our community comes to the table, we outside rallying, making noise, three weeks later, you can't find anybody. I pray that's the case. But guess what? But guess what? We need you to stay diligent and find you when it's other, when it's all of our children, just like the brother said, it could be my son. A moment ago, it was this young lady's son. We all have to be willing to come to the table for each other. It's not just about your son, your brother, you, it's about all of our children. And making sure that those, those members of our community who don't live here, who getting paid to do salaries, making sure that they do their job and do it respectfully. You deserve the same amount of respect that anybody else does. So I'm, 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 I'm dismayed, I'm disappointed that once again, it's another black family coming before this council in distress. There are, there's a lot of questions that need to be asked.
And answered.
And answered, correct. There's a lot of questions, and believe it or not, my phone will stay consistently on the prosecutor's line, asking what has been the progress. But that's where we have to lay our cards. And I'm happy you guys come here because the pressure needs to be put on everybody who holds a seat that of relevance. The pressure of change needs to be here. Everybody campaigns on change, on hope, on this, on that, yet it's still, nothing changes in our community. It's the same group of people coming before here with the same concerns. So I'm asking all of you, allow this to be the last life that we allow to be lost in silence. Don't make noise just for one night. Don't make noise just for three weeks. Continuously make noise. Just, I was on the phone with somebody, and we start naming the individuals that we lost, year after year after year, then the list goes on. You know, brother, I came over to you, you didn't come to me. When I heard you speak, I came right to you. Your life is an example, is an impression that will set a different tone for our community. You don't need to be sitting in silence, man. People need to hear your story all the time. And our kids need to follow that example as we lift our community out of these trenches. Because if it's not one of them, it's one of us killing one of us. But it's still the black community coming before our podium. It has to stop. It has to stop, and I can guarantee you this. If I'm on the mayor's phone, the BA's phone, every single day, what answers are we giving to our community? I would not allow any of you to stand outside without me, I'll stand out there with you before I allow them to hold you out. But I need you to stand consistently for all of those people who have losses. Don't just come for, for this brother, he's a great brother, but there's so many of us that's losing our lives unnecessarily. We gotta figure this out, people. And the only way it's gonna happen is if we come together and stop remaining separate. That's it, it's the only answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, Councilman McCoy.
Thank you, uh, Council President. First, let me, let me extend my, um, my deep and profound condolence to the family, mom and dad that are here, brothers, sisters, and the entire community. We ta- we at times don't think that we are connected. But we are. Jamique Lori, calling Mickey, his aunt, and I go back for eighteen years. I probably would not be sitting in this seat had it not been for her. And she called me this evening before I came here to let me know of that connection. I'm a father of three children. Two sons and one daughter. And it, it's sad and pains me because this is our, our collective reality, our collective experience. All through this conversation tonight, I'm imagining myself in your situation. I'm trying to comprehend what that reality would mean. And I'm, I'm scribbling on the paper, what are, what are the things that have been said? And the word, "We need your help, we need help, help us." What if this was your kid? How would it be different? How would you want it to be treated? And with all of that has been said tonight, and all the things that we have seen and heard, and the, our missteps and our misdeeds, none of us are, are perfect human beings, none of us live in a perfect world or in a perfect department. Like Councilman Jackson, I, I respect the fi- the police chief, I respect the fire chief. I know Jerry Spiezal before, when he first ran as sheriff, it's somebody that I, that I respect. But the fact of the matter is, we're in a broken system. And if you ask me if this was my kid, what it is that I would ask for? And I should ask for the same thing for your child as I would ask for mine. And that's equity, that's justice, that's authoritativeness, that's a comprehensive look at what happened. And, um, we all should be a little heartbroken tonight. I can't give you the answers. And more importantly, I don't think none of us here, or even the system here, can give you the answer. I don't think you, in order to accept the answer, you need to have the confidence that the person that's giving you that answer, is unbiased and free and gonna give you the clear information. I would, the mayor said, and I, I believe him, that we need the truth. I hear the fire, the police director said, we too need to understand the truth and what happened. I'm gonna say this, and it, I think that we collectively, and I've said it before, this is not a new concern of mine. And not everybody may share this view. But I think it's very difficult for the local prosecutor to investigate this type of situation, knowing their close working relationship with the police department. I don't think, I don't think that that's a new concept, that's not a new idea. It's not the first time I'm saying it, and it's not, I'm not the first person to say it. I think the responsibility, the relationship is too cozy, and more importantly, the public, the family, has expressed that they don't have the confidence in the department to carry out, prosecutor's office to carry out that investigation. That's something I've said before. But I think this should be different. This is more heart wrenching. Person talked about the video. And the video is, is, can be characterized as a cry for help. A, a cry for help. And whether, regardless of, you've heard the cry for help, the reference to his untimely passing in the video, in his own words. I think as a community, I think as a community, as a society, we have to hear that, we have to feel that, and we have to respond to it in a responsible way. I think, Mayor, you should join counsel in this administration and ask that the highest law enforcement entity in the state of New Jersey, the Attorney General Office, personally take responsibility for this case and for this investigation. And I've asked for it before, and I don't mean for the Attorney General to tell me he is taking, he's overseeing the prosecutor's office. I need, and I suggest, that as a collective body, to give this community confidence, to ask that we place our trust in the system, to ask that we remain calm and wait for the results, and have the ability to be confident that the results that we get are in fact the results. We need to have that happen. As good as our department is, we have some problems. And it makes no sense that we pretend that they're not there. When a police officer is arrested for selling drugs right out of the squad car, we have to admit that we have some problems. And our confidence is shaken, and it's shaken to the core this evening. And I think the only response that we can get is that highest level of response to take that investigation. And secondly, as a community, as a council, the administration, the mayor said it, I think we need to wrap our arms around this family. And pledge to support them emotionally in every which way, that they will be able to get to the answers that they're seeking, and that the just response will come to whatever the outcome will be, that they can have confidence in that. And I think if we don't do that, I won't be able to sleep. I won't be able to rest. Because I know what it is as a father to raise two young black men in the city of Patterson. I do know that. And I think we need to make that accord. And if everybody is speaking, if we can, because it's, you know, what we might say or we might do, it's one thing. If we can come to that understanding, what would be the course of action leaving this place today? That we can commonly agree on? What is our compact? One, that we collectively ask for an independent, fully independent investigation driven by the Attorney General Office regarding this case, and give us that response in a public forum with all of the documentation to give the community assurance that their family member was treated in accordance with how we would want to be treated and resolve that matter. Thank you, Madam President. And again, to the family, know that we're here for you. We not only hear you, but we feel you. We feel your pain, I can identify with that. And we will be with you all the way. As we collectively look for the answers, not just for the community, but I think the police department needs the answers, the fire department needs the answers. All of our city needs to know what happened, how it happened, and hold ourselves to making sure that this would never happen again. And whatever mistakes might be made, whatever situation might have been, wherever the fault may lie, that we need to lay that beer, lance that wound, and address it in a top-down, comprehensive manner, and put this thing to bed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilman McCoy. I know that you want to speak, but Councilwoman Mims.
The reason I'm asking
Yes.
The council will have all night to speak.
I'll be brief. I'll be brief. I've spoken to members of the family, friends of the family, I've spoken to the mom over the course of the last two days. I'm a mom, single mother, four children, one daughter, three boys, two grandsons. Very unfortunate situation, and so many things, so many answered questions that you have, and like everyone is looking for, the investigation to be resolved to find answers. But here's my request of the administration. Not sure what the family's situation is, not sure if it's ever been done, but I'm making a request. This family will have to bury Jamique Lowry. Not sure if they have the funds to do that. But my request is to ask this administration to assist this family, to find out funeral costs, work with Lagard. But I think we need to, as a city, because of this outcry from this family, and I'm not sure if it's ever been done, so I'm just putting it out here. And I have the advantage of being a new councilperson at large. But when something like this happens, I know there's the victim fund, if it's a homicide and that type, but I'm not sure in For the county. But I'm not sure in these type of situations, because we have an ongoing investigation. But when this is over, the autopsy is done, the body will be released, and this family will need to lay to rest their son, their brother, their cousin, nephew. It's so sad, I sat here in tears. And someone said it, "What if this was your child?" And it's very, it's very, very sad. I've seen him many times. I remember him from school twenty-one, which was my alma mater, I remember him. Spoke, very respectful, and to see what was going on, I, in a fad, so I was not on social media the first day, but when I got the calls, it forged me to go onto social media. And I made calls to our police director, who I think does a great job. I called our BA, I spoke to our corporation counsel. Because I wanted to make sure I didn't say the wrong thing on social media, or put something out there. But I talked to the family, and I think that's very important. I don't think that needs to be put on social media, that I'm talking to the mother, or I'm talking to the cousin, or talking to the, I don't think people need to know that you're doing that, because people know who you are. When people know who you are, you don't have to profanticate it, you don't have to say, "This is what I'm doing," and all that, because people really know people that really care. And so my heartfelt condolences go to this family. I commend you for doing a rally. I commend you for coming here in peace. I commend you for your peaceful demonstration on last night in front of the house. And I commend you for taking a stand and not letting this go. But I am gonna make this recommendation to our mayor, to our BA, that we reach out to this family with these funeral costs and in a system. I'm not sure what it will be, but we can talk to Lagard. But I think as a city, due to this outcry from this family who is crying for help, they haven't asked for that, but I'm not sure what we can do, but if we can have that conversation to assist in this situation, and we're here. Don't think we're not here. My name is Councilwoman Mims, I'm here. You need me, I am here for you. And thank you so much for coming, my condolences really close to this family.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Mims. Mr. Mayor, I know that Mr. Mayor wanted to just
Yeah, Councilwoman, thank you. I met with Reverend Frederick Lagard this morning, who's handling funeral arrangements at Michigan Memorial, and asked how I can be of assistance, so he's gonna provide me with that information, because I told him I wanted to help.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councilmembers, I have been to this mic too many times, in front of City Hall, too many times, what is happening in our community, the black community. I don't see these deaths going over citywide. When the family asks questions, of course, they're anxious right now, because they have no answers. But you have to understand, we in the black community have no faith in the system, because we have seen the system screw us too many times. It is time, and I will piggyback on Councilman McCoy, I have no faith in the prosecutor's office. When it comes down, just like Pike and that video, she found no cause. When it comes to this family, I don't want to see that happen, no cause, because we're playing games. Yes, the state attorney general should be brought in. We did it for Joey Torres, we damn sure could do it for us. I'm tired, I'm sick and tired of watching us bury our children from our community. Yeah, I know everybody has sympathies towards this, but no one can match the emotion of the family. They need answers, and I respectfully understand that we must wait for certain reports. But I do not want to see, Mr. Mayor, another gathering of handpicked community leaders, like with the Pike situation, brought into a room, and so those, which you know I was not invited, I broke in. Because we had to have voices or asking other questions than the made-up questions that was given to them. I'm sick and tired of my community being the only community that suffers this way. We're talking about funeral arrangements. It should have never happened. We make speeches, but we don't change the system. The State County Prosecutor's Office should not ever handle anything of this nature. If you look at her track record, there's always a finding of no guilt. Yes, cops went to jail, they got caught with their drawers down. That's the only reason. It was an embarrassment. That's why they went to jail. But when one of us get killed, that's not an embarrassment. We're supposed to go home, bury our children, and act like nothing happened. Let me say to this family, you will get no justice if you ignore what happened. If you're mad for a day, they will do what they normally do. I will also say to you, violence is not the way to handle this. Believe me, if you want to turn this into a tragedy, give them a reason. Handle this with this. You know, my name is Ernest Rucker. I am from Patterson. And my voice is loud on these issues. There was an interesting remark I've heard, and Mr. Mayor, I'm not picking on you, I promise I wouldn't pick on you, yet. But if this man reached out to you three times, thirty times in ninety days, the courtesy, and I know there may be some truth to that, because I text you, they're gonna text back. I call you, they're gonna give a call back. So this is not something new. This is not new. The black community has put everyone on notice. If you want peace, do something about this. I never advocate violence. But you know, it comes a time, you get tired of foot in your ass, and you have to do, Council President, that was about the nicest thing I could say. Okay? I am tired. I'm tired of going to hospitals, I'm tired of going to funerals, I'm even tired of the black or black tribe in my own community. But when people are hired to come here to do a job from all over the county, I never see so many people that don't look like us out here protecting us and living somewhere else. That committee that you create, the personnel committee, I commend you. Stand tall, stand straight, I don't care who they say, you got a friend. We have to have people that live here that look like us. We have to encourage them to take these tests. But what they do in our community, they make sure we have a record first, so we can't take those jobs. That is racism on every level. Please, let this not be lip service, all the condolences, all that. Let's get the answers the family need. Let's ask the state's attorney general to personally handle this. Let's put some faith back into the system. And I know you guys have certain limitations as legislators. And you must, the only thing you can feel sympathy and warmth for the community. But we are tired of being the punching bags for these new cops that are coming in here that look nothing like us, have no idea what we do or how we live. They know nothing about our heritage or what we've gone through in this city. Why is that? I'm tired of seeing payoffs by elect, not electing, hiring people from out of town that have known nothing about this city, and none of them can get a job. Do the right thing, and you'll have peace in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Madam clerk, we haven't called out any of the people on the list.
Not on the list. I just wanted to confirm all the family members have spoken. I see some Laurys, Monique Lowry, Kia Lowry. I'm assuming there are some of the family members.
Okay, so we're gonna have, ma'am, not you, you're sending, you want to speak? Okay, so you will be the last person to speak, okay? All right.
I won't be long. So my name is Candy Clyburn, and I moved, I don't live in Patterson anymore, but this is like my in-laws and Mickey, my children, they all played together. But I wanted to say this, mainly to you, Ms. Maritza. I remember coming here three years ago, and we spoke about my nephew. And I can recall, I looked at the video like more than three times, and I recall you were sitting, and there was, you held a conversation as I spoke, and you, I felt like you completely ignored everything that we were saying, you know, how we expressed our feelings. Because you held a conversation with someone else, and it's funny how you sit here in the beginning, early tonight, how you stated how, you know, things are tied up. Clearly, it seems like everything is always tied up. And then, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I say to you, I can recall when you were trying to get your votes and everything like that, you walked around every neighborhood, walked all through the streets, the hoods and all, to get your votes. And here this young man, he reached out to you, and yet you couldn't walk up there to where he was at? You couldn't reach out to him? He did a job on the hope of thinking that he can get his children, because the men in blue tricked him, they lied to him, and telling him, "We can help you get your children, just do this for us." And then look what happened. I saw the video, my daughters, they showed me, said, "Look at the video." And I couldn't believe what I saw. That young man was asking for water. The water fountain was right to his right. You had one officer who hid on the right side of the video. You had other police officers just standing around, to me, they was making a, you know, making a little joke, they thought it was funny. Then there was another officer asking him, "Just turn the phone off." You see somebody coming to the police station with no shoes sweating, boy wasn't high, sweating, was running for his damn life, that's what it was. And instead of administering help, you sit there and you make a mockery, then you call your other people, and he's sitting there clearly stating how they're right out there, they're trying to kill me. Once again, three years ago, I said this, and I'm saying it again, you hire these people to be police officers, and they're supposed to uphold the law. And you ask me, they're no better than me or anybody else. Because it's like the minute they take off, the first thing they do is to target. You know, want to beat people up. You say something, here they come being nasty, disrespect, you know, disrespecting you, for no apparent reason at all. Yeah, my sister, her son was killed by an officer, and though people may say, "Oh, because he got nine and a half years," she got, she'll never get justice, just like these parents, they'll never get justice, because they'll never see their son ever again. Yeah, that's all nice and, and all's well and good, you know, you want to help pay for the funeral, but then what about her other But then what about her other children who are in the system? They're being harassed and, and got other, you know, the guards telling other kids, you know, to attack them. What about them? Are they gonna be left without, she got, they gotta get another call? It's like we're always being failed, all the time. I just don't understand, like, why these police officers are not being investigated. From the door, when this went, when this all took place, those cops who came to him, listen, we want you, they should have been pulled in immediately. What's the problem, what's the holdup? Because these are same officers who watches the cameras in the, in that room, because I've been in that room before when I was questioned. And you sit there, and you, and you got the officer watching all the cameras on all the blocks. And the minute they see a little white light go across, here they come, they moving expeditionally to the scene, and wasn't nothing but a doggone firecracker. But yeah, you had this young man coming to the police station, begging and pleading and asking for help. And he lost his life to beat somebody to where the eye socket is broken. I couldn't even, I, my stomach started turning. Because I can't even imagine that somebody can literally just beat somebody like that. What type of person, what type of people are you guys hiring? Yeah, they murderers, it's sad. And then here, three years ago, there was a crowd for Jaquiel, Justice for Jake. But now you got another situation going on, who's like family, and you got a bigger crowd out there. Now it's gonna take another, is it gonna be another situation, it's gonna, the crowd's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. It's not gonna stop. The question is, don't sit here and come looking at the civilians, look at your officers. Look at your officers. Clearly, it's in the newspapers, how they're getting arrested because they're taking drugs from one, uh, uh, one of the drug dealers and a gun, and then they going on another block and they selling it. That man had nothing to do with that, all that man wanted was his children. To get to the hospital from here, from Broadway to there, don't take but not even ten minutes. There's no reason why the times, everything, nothing, nothing adds up, nothing at all. So I hope and pray, because nothing, we didn't get the help with my nephew, and I hope and pray to God that something gets done with this here family. Because this is sad all the way around the board. I live in Georgia now, and I show, went to my daughter's school and showed them pictures and videos of this here town. And all the teachers can say, "Who is running that town?" Because it looks horrible. It's horrible. So you should be really embarrassed, really embarrassed as a mayor and council, whoever, to sit here in the city of Patterson. City of Patterson, it, it failed. It's, it's no good, and it's sad. And, and you're supposed to lead by an example. These police officers are supposed to lead by an example, because if they doing right, maybe the city, the, the, the civilians are doing right. Because they messing up, we gonna mess along with them, who are they? So I hope, Ms. Marissa and all the rest of you guys, do something about it. I hope this doesn't get ignored how it was in my nephew Jaquiel.
Thank you very much.
Now, we gonna make this quick, because I see everybody yarning at things, they tired. We just got inside, so our time is limited because we just got inside. We not gonna talk about it, though. But, like they said, Ms. Bowe said, this family, we won't stop. We not gonna stop. I'm unfamiliar face, we gonna get very familiar, because I'm gonna be down here a lot. But anyway, I want to address a few things about St. Joe's Hospital. And they medical records, because we have them, this only few of the pages, we have them. The nurse there, the ER nurse, made us very aware, because she the ones who called the police. The nurse, the ER nurse. We don't want to call names, I have her name, though. But she made it aware to us, she came to us in a conference room and let us know that she called the police and why she called the police. She said, "When I found, when I found, found Ja'Meek, he was unresponsive, his body was very cold, etcetera." There's no need to go further. She said, "There was no one around him, no ambulance, no MT workers, no nothing." She didn't know if it was CPR done on him, anything, but he had oxygen in his face. That's give oxygen to a dead situation, right? Talk about it. Anyway, that's one thing, how, how did that happen? He was found. But he was also arrived, he, he came with somebody, right? It was protocol that an officer followed him because the papers state that when they released him from the twenty-one-minute hospital visit first until the police custody. So he now is an inmate who in y'all custody going live, talk, and nobody touching him, nobody telling him he arrested, he under arrest, sit down, or nothing. He just freely doing what he want and asking for water. But again, he's in y'all custody because the paperwork said they released him to y'all. Why? I don't fucking know. Nobody knows, because they didn't tell us why they released him to Patterson Police. But he was released in custody. Twenty-one minutes to be exact, I got this, I got black and white. Twenty-one minutes to be exact, he was at St. Joe's Hospital. He was seen and discharged in twenty-one minutes. And everyone know, twenty-one minutes you go to St. Joe's? You still trying to give the reason why you're there in twenty-one minutes? You still waiting to get your virus check in thirty-two minutes? So that's first and foremost right there. We gonna make it quick, like I said, but these are points that I need y'all to know. Two, after they got Miki situated, whatever, this dead body that they giving us hope to, I'm keeping hope alive, because my sister coming from a different state, and I need her to think everything's okay with him, so her ride here could be comfortable, okay? The doctor comes in there, the doctor, after the ER nurse talked us, the doctor came in there, he addressed this stuff, we're in a conference room, he said, he proceeded to talk. I said, "Who are you, you the doctor that I was working on?" He said, "I'm an ER doctor." I was called to the ER. He's not an ER doctor, but he was called to the ER to work on this kid for whatever reasons at six forty-seven AM. He said to us as a family, "When I got there at six forty-seven AM, Ja'Meek," it's crazy that this kid was unresponsive and everybody knew his name, right? Y'all, let's talk about that, though. He wasn't a John Doe, his name was Ja'Meek Laurie. Unresponsive, no relatives, no nothing, they knew who this kid was, okay? He said, "The nurse told me when she found him," again, we using the word "found" because that's what the second doctor said, the nurse said it first, the doctor said, "When, when they found him, he was unresponsive." I can't, they called me down at six forty-seven. Ja'Meek was already there for about an hour or so. I said, "Doing what?" He said, "He was just there." So I've been working on him since six forty-seven. He's now comfortable, coma state, etcetera, whatever, y'all know what it is if y'all did the homework, but that's what I'm addressing. He was found there, and the ER doctor was called there, not the ER doctor, he was called to the ER at six forty-seven, and he stated to the family that Ja'Meek had been there for an hour. Those are his records, not mine is. No, he said forty-five to be exact, but I just said hour. I got it on paper, but it's okay, listen. He still was, he say he was found, but he still was called there. He was there, whatever it was, that's why his organs failed. He had no working organs at this time when they got to him. Damn, so soon? No oxygen, y'all know how it go, right? No blood flowing, dead situation, right? No CPR done. Oh, but he had a mask on like they was giving him oxygen, all right. The third thing is, St. Joe's, they numbers are so incorrect in the paperwork. How we know? Because we going from the time he was on live, the time he was discharged, and the time he was back there. Since we don't trust Patterson Police with their investigation, we, as a family, have to do our own, right? Okay. The time says seven forty-nine. By seven forty-nine, he was getting a CAT scan, but they said he got there at seven forty-nine. So that puts us at wondering for four more extra hours, where was he? So we gonna stick to the two hours, because they not gonna have y'all puzzled even more, like, where was he? No, we don't want to try to do that, because we just want to try to figure out the two hours. Anyway, where was he? So we figure we getting St. Joe's investigated. The CEO of St. Joe's, y'all, came to the conference room. Where they do that? They talk to the family. They actually came to the conference room, introduced themselves, "I'm the CEO." Brought us dinner. What? We knew something was wrong, and he knew something was wrong, too. They don't do that. Because we been there with previous family members or, or friends, etcetera, consoling them. We never seen that happen before. That gave us a radar that they knew, he knew something was wrong as well, the CEO. Again, we had paperwork, though, just the black and white. So we figure we get a change of venue on the case. We want everybody from the city of Patterson removed. If you guys don't help us do that, I guess we gotta push for that on our own, too. We'll take it out of the city of Patterson. It's not a problem. An independent investigation, as far as an independent autopsy. We just want these things answered, we just want that done. We ain't asking for much, and we coming with respect. We gonna keep coming with respect until we don't get what we want, or we get disrespected, then we feel like we have to push some other kind of ways. We don't want to do that. Ms. Bowe's already told y'all, this family, yeah, we, we huge, and we not gonna stop. So the crowd outside, that's their support team. When we stand up, we stand tall, and we not gonna stop. We just want answers. That's it. We don't want to be like, oh, five years later, we at somebody else meeting and be standing here like, "Yeah, cuz Ja'Meek Laurie in two thousand and nine." No, we don't want, no. We, we don't want to be that, I don't want to be that, um. I just need y'all to figure it out for us. That's it. We sad as hell. We confused, our vision is blurry, we angry, we pissed off. Some of them numb, they don't know what to think. So we asking y'all, we here on our half an hour visit, because y'all ain't want to let us in our time for whatever reasons. You know, those, those are things, St. Joe's, the visit, the time, just, and they simple questions. I went to the, um, McBride Ave, three hundred McBride Ave, and I spoke with someone yesterday, and I asked them, that's the ambulance department. "Oh, I'm here to get the, um, you know, the record about the dis, you know, the dispatch call about, you know, the kid Ja'Meek, they was very familiar with it, oh, yeah. Oh, but the guy ain't here, come back tomorrow." No, call, they gave me a number, call tomorrow. Instead of calling, because I told y'all we won't stop, popped up late in the day. He said, "Oh, I'm gonna find him." "Oh, but he ain't here, came back, he ain't here." "Oh, but the chief gonna come see you." I sat down, I'm like, "Oh, the chief coming, I'm gonna really get some shit done today." The chief came out, he stood there. I asked him his name first, he told me his name. He spoke to my sister, because they think I'm the one that's tripping. He told her, oh, he listened to everything he said, she gave him ID, he said, "Did the ambulance pick you up from here?" She said, "No, I'm not here for me, I'm here for, you know, Ja," he was very familiar, "Oh, Ja'Meek Laurie, the one that got picked up by Godwin Ave Avenue." That's what he said, that's, I'm like, "Oh, shit." He familiar. He said, "Oh, it was two dispatchers for that kid that night." I'm like, "Absolutely, we just here for the dispatcher name, who took the dispatch call, who rolled the call and everything." He said, "Oh, we can't give y'all that information." I said, "Oh, we was aware yesterday to come back today, and we can have the information, there's no problem. This is what y'all do, y'all give this information." He said, "Oh, no, the prosecutor came here yesterday." I guess after I left, somebody told him I was there, y'all. "They came yesterday, and they got that information, and we can no longer have it. There's no access to us for it. We had to come here to put in a request from you guys, and then we had to wait for it. So I guess we'll get it when we no longer need it, because we done brushed up aggressively and got it from somewhere else." Why? We don't want to do that. We still talking about being here with respect and just getting answers, it's simple. Just give us the paperwork so we can do our own investigation, because the city of Patterson not doing shit. Because the city of Patterson doing other shit, they killing kids. So where, who we go to for trials, where do we run to? And y'all keep saying respect, "Oh, we don't want to let y'all live, y'all tripping." That's why. Y'all ain't doing shit so y'all provoking us to trip, and we don't want to trip. We not that type of family. Everybody can trip, everybody can be disrespectful, we not coming like that yet. We just want shit done. If y'all make a move, we'll back up. If y'all backing up, we coming forward, because we feeling provoked. Don't do that to us, we not that type of family. But we will stand tall and get what we want by any means, by any means. And like I said, we here with respect. What happened to the paperwork? Why we can't get it? Because they got it. Why they running there getting it? They know, they, they could go in their system and see who dispatched the police and all that on their computers. Why they go all the way there and shut it down? All it takes is one copy. Here you go, ma'am. "Oh, but no, it's an investigation, so we can't get it, why?" That's strange as hell, right, tomorrow? That's strange. Just like, yeah, we want to see what y'all want to see. Just like they going to Dunkin' Donuts, getting the cameras, why? Dunkin' Donuts is two rows down from the police station. Why the hell y'all need them cameras? Why? On a Saturday, the same Sa, we talking about the same Saturday, though. Why is all this happening like that? Why y'all need a camera two house, two rows down from y'all office? Ain't shit happening Dunkin' Donuts right here on Broadway with the police station right there. You fucking kidding me? Where is the video? Why y'all go get it? What y'all need it for? Y'all two, two houses down, a store and a parking lot down. It's not making any sense. So you guys, since y'all looking at me now like, "Oh, shit." We was like, "Oh, these motherfuckers really killed them." They pushing up, you know?
Ma'am, ma'am.
They had us aggressive, uh, uh. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry. But that's how I'm feeling, like, why they take the video on a Saturday? They don't go in there all the time to get the video, because the manager told us just that Saturday. Why? Why they moving like this? Why they mov, and it's making us angry? Again, we still, we still got respect, because we want what we need. Not want what we want, we want what we need. We need this to be solved, we need this to be addressed. If y'all ignore it, we gonna provoke. And we don't, it's no threats, it's just telling you how we gonna move as a family to get justice for Ja'Meek. That's it, that's all we want. I ain't see nobody take notes down to anything that I addressed just now to remember to address it yourselves. But again, I go to the Wigs store, you know, downtown, I go to Broadway Pizza. I'll stop in here, like, I'm gonna stop in the prosecutor's office. I don't have a problem with doing that, and tell y'all shake something and make things happen. That's it.
Thank you very much.
I guess thank you too, ma'am, for inviting me in for a few minutes for a meeting that damn near got walked up for, just because I was too close to the door. It's not fair. It's not.
Council President.
Again, y'all will see me again today, Tuesday, Monday.
Okay.
I ain't sleep since my nephew got killed. What today? Tuesday, I'll be back Thursday.
Just, just, just to, to just make something clear, this is not for a rebuttal. I'm, I'm just gonna, um, okay, um, we did not lock anyone out. We actually had the family here. Um, I did not know if you arrived at six thirty when the father was here. Okay, no, not the entire, ma'am, I, I, it's not a rebuttal. I just want you to know that, um, we continue, we have to do our business. So this is not that we are putting something aside. We, ma'am, what I'm saying is, we are here today on a council meeting. This is our workshop, workshop meeting, okay? And we have, we have items that needed to be covered. There was a specific presentation that was scheduled, so we allowed the presentation to take place, and then we had the family come in. We haven't even started our business, okay? So I don't want you to make it think that we don't, we're not being, that we're being inconsiderate. We're not. I mean, I want to stay here and speak to everyone the whole night, but we can't do that. Because a lot of the questions that you are asking us, we cannot answer right now. But we definitely, if you were here listening to most of the council members speak this evening, we want answers as well, and you're gonna get your answers, okay? Yes, and you can't hold me to it. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, I am, I'd, I'd like to, um, thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk, I... Okay, Madam Clerk, I am gonna, we're gonna start the meeting, okay? I'm, I'm gonna put aside the, the rest of the public portion. It's, we're gonna take a five-minute break, okay? Just five minutes, and we'll continue with the meeting, okay?
Okay.